This conference will now be recorded. This is the Rome meeting of the Rome City Council. This is Thursday, March 23rd, 2023. This meeting will not come to order. We have one absent, however, we do have a quorum. Still missing somebody here or something. Good. And, um, okay, let's start out with a prayer, please. And we've got Pastor Van Zant from the Antioch Baptist Church.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. And let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear the Father, thank for this day and I thank for everything that you bless us with. I thank for the wonderful weather that we have. God, I pray that you'll please us be with our city council and our mayor. And I pray that you'll please just allow them to make the best decisions for this city going forward. I pray that you'll please just allow them to have your divine hand upon them. And I pray that you'll please just allow us as patrons to continue to just be upright citizens, Lord. Lord, I pray that you'll please us be with our first responders. And I pray that you'll please just bring them home safely tonight. Certainly thankful for them and the government that you've established in this nation as well as in this city. And I pray that you'll please just put your hand upon them. And I pray that you'll please just allow us to have you in mind. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll go on to public comments. Um, the council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary@citysecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of the public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a friend, family member, or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to assault, abuse, malign, or slander any individuals shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. Okay, um, Ms. Shayna, what you got?
All right. Up first, we have Lisa Wilson by Joanne Wilson regarding Easter egg hunt, upcoming election, ensuring existing facilities, and events.
Lisa has asked me to read this for her. Her address is 240 West First here in Rome. Mayor and council, our topics are Easter egg hunts coming up Saturday, April the first. Yes, it's April Fool's Day that we're really having the hunt on the thing. And please come help us get rid of 2,600 Easter eggs because we need all the help we can get.
We stuffed them all with candy.
Yeah. Don't say how long it took us. We, you know, it's kind of like drinking. You take a drink and you share it and it's candy. Patty ate a whole lot of candy. But anyhow, uh, the Antioch Church where the Van Zant, they're going to join us at the Easter egg hunt. We're also sharing time with the New York Easter egg hunt, which is the same day, but they're having their time is from 10 to 12. So then they can run up here and enjoy our eggs. We, the citizens of Rome, are blessed to have lovely family and veterans parks, which were made possible by our previous councils. Driving by frequently, now this is from Lisa, I see the family park utilized by many residents on a beautiful day. Also, often the veterans park is visited by others some for meditation. I believe that the citizens should not have to pay to use the park for inclusive events for all citizens. Having said this, I also feel that the city or the parks committee should be the one scheduling and handling the events. That's not happening. Therefore, a group of conservative citizens working together to bring our city together are sponsoring events and paying out of their own pockets, and the city is charging them for what our tax money should be doing. In the past, many events have seen large turnouts. Let's get back to those days. Recently on social media, there has been talk about the state of our buildings in Rome being unsafe, condemned, et cetera. I question this, and y'all can answer it, because TML insures these buildings. Do they insure buildings that have been condemned? Where is written documentation condemning our buildings? As we all know, buildings will disintegrate. Even my house could stand some pain. During this time, we need to be physically responsible. Are there other ways to ensure safety? I really don't believe chips will help the safety of the buildings. Lastly, election day is coming up, May the 6th. Voting will be right here. Shayna says I can't say anymore about it. You want me to do my next here or you want me to come back? Okay, uh, this is from me as an individual. Mayor and council, my name is Joanne Wilson, 240 West First here in Rome, with a yard that was finally mowed today. So keep the ordinance officer away on the thing. Uh, again, Easter egg hunt is coming up. We want all y'all to be there, all of y'all to help. We're trying to make sure that maybe no child goes home without some reward of some kind. And the parents will not have to pay for absolutely anything other than snow cones or $3 each, which I understand that's a reasonable price for snow cones. Uh, previously, I brought up two things. I would like to see signage for the restrooms that indicate where the restroom in the pavilion is in our family park. And also consider a cleaning service for maintenance of the restrooms there. I think that would help make life simpler for maybe our public works people. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Deborah B. Kraft regarding the family park.
I'd like to make a statement of fact on, on that last public comment. No one said that the buildings were condemned. They said they should be.
Okay, I'm Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. Uh, just a reminder, the Traveling Wall will be leaving JTS Trucking at 12:30 on Tuesday to Motorcade through Aurora, Boyd, Paradise, Bridgeport, and then 380 back to Decatur. And we'll be setting up the wall that day. It will be open starting Wednesday through Sunday 24/7. So please come and enjoy that. And we were helping them. We're helping them out. It's not us doing it. It is the Wise County Veterans, but we put an ad in their brochure. Okay. And as far as the parks, I'd like to know what the citizens get for the $75 special event fee for the family park. I could understand charging for the electric for the pavilion and even the deposit for cleaning, but for the family park? Our tax dollars already pay for the park. Isn't this double dipping? Charging the citizens of the city to host an event that should be offered by the city as other cities in the county do? Should not be something that not only do a group of citizens have to pay for out of their pocket to host, but then have to pay the city to use the park. It's just not right, in my opinion. If I wanted to have a group of friends or family for a basketball game and picnic, and anyone that wanted to join was welcome, would I need to pay for the use of the park? With that fee, it's the same thing. I was told a year or so ago that if I wanted to do a family reunion in the park at those picnic tables and use the grills, that I would have to pay that special use fee. And whether we cooked the food there or brought it from our homes, the food would have to be inspected and we'd have to pay the health inspection fee. That is, are you going to start charging when people do barbecues in their yard and have their family and friends over? I mean, it's the same thing. The fee charges are getting out of hand since our tax dollars already cover the cost of the park and support of every department in the city. I could understand charging non-residents if they want to host an event, but not our own residents. And if the city is so short on cash that we need to charge this group of citizens to hold this Easter egg hunt, then I'll gladly pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. B. Kraft.
Uh, next, we have Joe Hernandez regarding communication.
Hello, Joe Hernandez, 105 School Road. Uh, first of all, I just want to give a shout out to Rome PD for their tireless work on this fatality hit and run investigation. Um, this goes to show dedication of our police department to serve our residents and those that travel through Rome. With the arrest of the suspect, Rome PD has brought a little more peace and comfort to the victim's family. Great job, Chief Devis and the member of Rome PD. Uh, the other one is, over the past few meetings, citizens have discussed communication from the city specifically in reference to inclement weather. This should not be the sole responsibility of city staff to post on inclement weather. If you have the ability to look at a Facebook post, then you should have the ability to look at the news or an app for updated local weather conditions. Don't put this responsibility on the city staff. Last one is mayor. What are your goals for the city? You have been in office several months now. We have yet to hear your vision for the city. Counsel, I ask that you adopt a resolution, policy, protocol, for this mayor and future mayor to provide their goals for the city upon their election to office, and for the mayor to provide a state of the city address in the first year of taking office. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. As you know, Mr. Hernandez, it's been extremely tumultuous for my tenure since I've been in office. So yeah, hopefully, we will get to a point where both the mayor and the council can work together and do it amicably. But thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Randall Loftus regarding dispatch.
My name is Randall Loftus. I reside at 315 West Morris Street in Rome. You may ask, what do you know about dispatch, Mr. Loftus? Well, I served as IT support for Tarrant Alarm for 12 years. I also served as IT support for two different fire departments in Tarrant County. Um, I guess my suggestions are not a solution, just something I believe you should consider. And that is that, um, there is a precedent for having multiple dispatches in a county. Tarrant County, for instance, Fort Worth has a dispatch. And also, there is Tarrant Alarm for the unincorporated Tarrant County. So I would suggest that when you're considering these additional charges for dispatch, you look at the whole thing with, um, Boyd and the other communities around here. You know, perhaps, you know, you consider how much we send to Wise County for dispatch and compare those costs. Is it effective to establish another dispatch for Southern Wise County? Also, I noticed you have an item on the agenda relative to, um, services from Tarrant County in Southern Wise County. And, um, I'd like to suggest perhaps you should talk to Tarrant Alarm and, um, see what they would do to support Southern Wise County. As far as, you know, how much would it cost? Could we get those tax dollars back from the county to the local residents? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Tommy Eason regarding packets and agenda.
Good evening to all. My name is Tommy Eason. I live at 1107 Mount Lang. Why has the city stopped including packets with the agenda for the council meetings? I liked it when we received the packets so that we could have more details on the issues as we follow along with the agenda. It gave me a better understanding of the agenda items. For example, when you hold a public hearing concerning a piece of property, we can already know where the property is and what the issues are. Currently, we have no idea where block so-and-so is. So if for nothing else, it will return, it will return a little transparency we used to have. Thank you for your time. And by the way, this is a city event.
Mrs. Eason? What, can you clarify that? You mean the meeting is a city event? Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Eason? The agenda packets are posted on the city secretary page under city government. It is? Yes, ma'am. There are two separate sites, one for agendas and packets and one for minutes. Uh, we are limited on the formulary as to the frame of the website and where we can put that, but I can certainly check into making that a little more easy to find. Last is Shirley Mize regarding permits.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Mize. I live at 170 Russell Street. Concerned of paying permit fees of $75 to use the family park grounds, green grass area, have a community egg hunt on April the 1st, 2023. I've lived in Rome almost eight years as a resident. I feel that I should have the benefit of using our park to enjoy and to help bring our community together. On February the 21st, I attended a scheduled meeting with the city administrator concerning the egg, Easter egg hunt, and only wanting to use the green grass grounds of Rome Family Park. And that I did not believe a permit fee would be needed since I was not using the pavilion. On March the 22nd, which was yesterday, 10 days before the event, I received an email from the administrator stating that she checked into the use fee for the 2023 Easter egg event and that she did not have the ability to waive the fee. Why was my question not brought before the council? Since I went on February the 21st, how long does it take? And I was asking, you know, possibly I could get this fee waived. Um, why would the city want to take the funds for a permit fee from the resident that is helping our community and that those funds will take away Easter egg prizes from our children of Rome? Please reconsider with the purpose of the city family park is to, is for our community and our residents of this city. No fees taking away from a much-needed community event. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Get anything else, Ms. Odom?
Ama.
Okay, very good. Uh, just announcements, uh, Fire Department boot drive, March 31st and April 1, 2023. And also city council meeting, April 13th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. And again, the Easter egg hunt, April 1st. Tell me the time, Mrs. Wilson. 1 to 3, Easter egg hunt at the family park. It's on. It's on. And I just happen to know the Easter. Anyone can come and ride with the ride from JTS Trucking with the Traveling Wall. Anyone can come and ride as an escort. Okay, very good. Any other announcements, counsel?
I do. Um, I also would like to thank Chief Devis, the Rome Police Department, um, for working that fatality accident. Not only that, but it was also our community. It was the residents of Aurora, Wise County, Jeep groups, by cell sites. I saw social media posts shared states away, uh, trying to find this. And that's exactly how our community should be coming together, working with local, uh, first responders, finding people that commit these types of crimes because that's absurd. If somebody that rides a motorcycle, it's hard enough to do it when there's no traffic. It's even worse when there is traffic around. Um, so my prayers for that family and thank you to everybody that came together to find this and get this done.
All right. Any others? All right. Let's move on to consent agenda. Uh, number one, minutes of city council regular session dated March 9th, 2023. Number two, Resolution 2023-10, naming Wise County Messenger as designated newspaper. Resolution 2023-11, Tarrant County Emergency Services District, number one. Partnership agreement, um, and number four, adding fire command vehicle to auction. And so I just need a motion for the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, let's go to record, uh, regular agenda. Um, let's, we're gonna, I'm rearrange a little bit here. I'm gonna go ahead and have, uh, Sheriff Lane Aiken come up and talk to us about the fee. That would be number three. Thank you so much, Sheriff Aiken, for being here and taking the time. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Can y'all hear me now? I too want to commend, uh, Rome PD. Excellent job on that. I know those things, those hit and runs can be terribly difficult. They did a great job and we're proud of them because we got a bad guy. Um, he ran away from a scene, which is a bad old deal. Uh, we, we lost a community, community member that we were especially fond of. So we're, we're sorry that we lost him, but we commend Rome, we commend Rome PD for a job well done. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I'm gonna try to station myself so that, so that I don't block anybody's view. And if I do, tell me to move out of the way. Okay. So, so we, we want to talk about 911 service call sharing. Dispatch center is what we're talking about, emergency communication center. At the Wise County Sheriff's Office, this is something that we've been talking about for quite some time, going back probably three or four years. We had a conversation and another conversation, another conversation. We have a chief's meeting every quarter. And so on occasion, I would bring this up because of the growth that we see here in Wise County. We need some help. And I think this PowerPoint presentation, would you be able to advance it? So this, this PowerPoint presentation will kind of set forth the information there. And two, I want everybody to understand that, that this doesn't have anything to do with commissioners or the county judge. This, this was my idea from back some time ago because I was, I was having conversations with several other sheriffs. And we'll talk about that as we go through this PowerPoint presentation. And I'll try to go through it pretty quickly because I know that you folks wouldn't want to spend too much time talking about these statistics that I'm gonna throw up here in just a second. So Shane, if we could, so we've got, these are the things because most people, Ken, I'll move over this way. Most people think about a dispatch center, they think there's one person, they're holding a microphone in dispatch, talking to one, one officer, one deputy. But in reality, they've got several things to do. So it's, it's a complicated process. These people are absolutely amazing the way that they can do all of these things at the same time. So we're talking about 911 calls, non-emergency calls, public service radio calls, city-specific ordinance calls, multiple data terminal interactions, NCIC, that's National Crime Information Center, and then Texas Crime Information Center. Registration, the registration on your vehicle. I know we've got some folks in here with law enforcement, so y'all understand what that is. Am I standing in the way? You're good. Registration, driver's license checks, and arrest warrants. Arrest warrants taking a multitude of time, keeping up with the actual warrant. You not only enter them into TCIC, NCIC, you're also having to keep the actual warrants and keeping them on hand so that we can make sure that the warrant that's been served has been taken care of. Next one, please, Shane. So this is a list of the dispatchers that we have right now. We have 16 dispatchers. And in this, this image that you see right here, the yellow slides, the yellow slots, those rectangles, those are open positions that we have right now in dispatch. That is seven of 16. Forty percent of our personnel. And it is difficult because we're so short-staffed. And it may be, it has something to do with the fact that we're competing for pay with buckies. And the reason we're looking for the buy-in from, from these cities is because we would like to increase their pay so that maybe we can keep these people on the job. Just recently, Grapevine PD, Craig Johnson is my chief deputy here. He shared information with me really on the way here. They're starting them out, dispatchers in Grapevine PD, they're starting them out at 52,000 up to 73,000. But we're paying right about, somewhere right around 40,000 for our dispatchers. So we're looking for the buy-in so that possibly we can get these people on board and we can keep them as dispatchers. It, it is a tough, tough job that they do because they're so, they're busy trying to take care of business. And, and they work every day of the week, every hour of the day, 365 days a year, including Thanksgiving and Christmas. They're out there doing the job. So that's why we need a little bit of buy-in from some of the other agencies. And in this presentation, we're talking about Rome. We're talking about Boyd and Runaway Bay. And we'll go through that, Shane, please. So we've got, talk about the cost per station. So salaries and benefits are at 65,000. Basically, that's what we're gonna talk here, talk about here because that's, that's the baseline. $65,000 for one dispatcher salary and benefits, $65,000. The radio station's another 5,000, the console's 5,000, CAD licensing, 10,000, 85,000 total. But we're gonna talk about 65,000. So if we have one station that is open every day of the, of the week and every, every day of the year, when you add that together and then you multiply 168, I'm sorry, if you divide 168 by 40, that's 4.2 dispatchers that we've got to have on scene, on site. And if you multiply 4, 4.2 times 65, that's $273,000 a year is what it costs. $273,000 a year to keep one station running throughout the year. Next one, please. So here, here is a pie chart that shows that Rome has the most of those calls for service. Calls for service, 2022 calls for service, 12,152, generated in areas without an emergency communication center. So again, that is, is Boyd, Rome, and Runaway Bay. Fifty-two percent of those are right here at Rome. Fifty-two percent. Fifty-two percent of that, 12,000. Next one, please. Proposal number one. In 2022, Rome PD created 6,364 calls for service. And when I say calls for service, those are actually when a, a car is created, it's a call. So if they make a traffic stop, that's a call for service. But then if they put the call in and, and run a criminal history, if they, they call in and they, they run the driver's license, if they check the registration, all of those are, are calls, but that's not a call for service. The only call for service is the fact that they made a traffic stop. And so there's gonna be a lot of other stuff involving the, the conversation between them and dispatch. So I hope that's understandable.
Let's let him finish. Mr. Eason, let's let him finish, and then you can ask your question, please, please. Go ahead.
So, um, we're talking about 6,000, 6,364 CFS. That's 100%. We're gonna consider that 100% of 65,000. And we're not gonna talk about Boyd, Runaway Bay, because I'll have those conversations with Boyd and Runaway Bay as time goes on. So if you're looking at 100%, since Rome has the most, you look at 100%, that would be $65,000 a year. Now, I want you to know, I want you all to know that this is a proposal, this is a discussion, something that we've been talking about for three or four years. And, and if we need to have that discussion as we move along, and I know there's some consideration of looking at other dispatch services, and I certainly understand that, but we'd be glad to talk to y'all about that, but we'd, we'd need to have some level of buy-in so that, that we can make sure that we have everybody staffed so that we can do the job that we need to do in a 911 emergency communications center. So proposal number two, most of the agencies around here, the sheriff's offices around here, most of those go by this second proposal. That is the actual calls from the agencies, and that's being, being divided into 104,500. That's a, that's 11.63% of our call volume, 11.63% of our call, call volume is, totals 148,672 dollars. So you see the proposal that they're using there is much higher than what we proposed, we're just making it 65,000 being the top. So that then would be, Rome would be 77,859. But that's not the proposal we're going with, and I don't think that y'all would like to go with a higher proposal, so we're looking at 65,000 being 100%. Next one, please Shane. So many people ask, are there other agencies doing this, or other, other agencies charging for dispatch services? So Parker County, Kaufman County, Rockwall County, Denton County, Hood County, Johnson County, Monta County, and Collin County. And then there's one down at the bottom, and that's Rockwall PD. Now, these are the agencies, the counties that surround the metroplex, with the exception of Ellis County. And Ellis County does not charge. But all the other counties that are contiguous to the metroplex, Dallas and Tarrant County, they're charging. And you can see Parker County, and in fact, I want to say now, because I'm sure that y'all will talk about that half-cent tax. And, and we'll talk, talk about it again here in just a minute. But the only one of those counties who actually charge or receive that half-cent sales tax is Parker County. The other ones do not. Wise County does perceive that half cent. So there you see the counties, and you see how much that, that they are charging those other agencies. So this is not something new. This is not something that's only going on here in Wise County. This is not something we just talked about recently. We rolled this out in January so that we could have this discussion. So next one, please Shane. So in in Wise County, we've got three, two other agencies that have dispatch centers. Bridgeport PD and Decatur PD. Bridgeport PD, and we're talking about just salaries and benefits, Bridgeport PD is $350,000 a year. That was in 2022. And then Decatur PD, 474,000, only for benefits and salary. So our budget, the WCSO communications budget is 1.278 million. And then when we come back and we look at 911 calls, Bridgeport 200, 2,642, Decatur PD, 911 calls, 5,072, Wise County Sheriff's Office, 26,101. So we're about, we're just a little more than three times what those other two agencies have. And you see what it, what it costs them just, and we're not talking about furniture, we're not talking about licenses, we're talking only about dispatchers and their salary and benefits. Next one, please Shane. This was on your Facebook page. Down at the bottom, it says if they cannot produce permit, you should call 911. The sheriff's office will dispatch a Rome police officer to respond. 26,000. 26,000 911 calls. And this is a city-specific call regarding solicitors. That's not something that, that we should ha, have to handle from dispatch center. They, they're, those things need to be serious, serious crimes, emergency loss of life, injury to life. We, we don't need to have to handle these kind of things through the 911 system. That's why we're asking for a little help. Because we're taking care of city-specific calls that has to do with ordinances, which that is an ordinance. Next one, please Shane. So let me read from this. When a city creates a police department and establishes a city code of ordinances, the responsibility of carrying out and enforcing those city laws, ordinances and services fall to the city. For example, a city called to WCSO dispatch, reporting a city water leak, high grass, solicitors without permits, parking violations, city speeding, et cetera. Our city service calls and the cost administration of those services is a responsibility of the city and should be contemplated in the city budget, not the county's budget. Next one, please Shane. Usage fees for taxpayers are also not foreign, not a foreign concept to cities. For example, a city uses city tax revenue to build city water systems, city taxpayers whose taxes funded that water system, in, infrastructure do not get to use that water for free. But city taxpayer is gonna have to pay a user fee in addition to their city tax based on the amount of water that they use. Now, I've lived in a city, I've lived in San Antonio, Garland, and Decatur. In Decatur most recently. And the city tax was 70 cents, but we had to pay for water, we had to pay for trash pickup, we had to pay for recycling. So it's not double dipping, it's not double taxation for the county, just as a city contracting with the county for dispatch service is not double taxation. It is the city paying for the services that are above and beyond county services and that are city-specific, not county-wide, for all county taxpayers. Next one, please Shane. So these are the general fund property taxes paid within the city limits. And we're talking about in Boyd there, that's 518,852 dollars. But the Wise County General Fund is 41,060, 41, 41,61,644 dollars. Next one, please. And the county tax sales revenue from within the city limits, this is that half-cent tax we were talking about. Everybody can see, I guess. They're not exclusively paid for by city residents because there are a lot of people passing through, there are county, county residents who spend the money here, and that money then goes back to the county, that half cent. And this thing was created in 1987, the tax code, for one half-cent county tax passed to be used for the reduction of indebtedness of the county. Next slide, please Shane. So we're talking about the total amount of taxes that we receive from, from Rome. Rome is 1,2972 dollars. And you see the others there, and the total of those percentages is 5.84% within the city limits contributed to the general fund. So the call volume at 5.84, and, I mean, I'm sorry, the revenue generated is 5.84% but the call volume is 11.63%. Next slide, please. So if, if, if you look at our general fund, 35, 34% of that goes directly to the sheriff's op, office operations. Enforcement, jail, and communication. That doesn't include, and so these are some of the things that, that you're getting here, the services that you get in the city from the county. It doesn't cover the expenditures at public safety sectors, constables, fire marshal, fire departments, emergency management, EMS, or DPS, nor does it include capital funding for WCSO vehicle replacements or grant funds rece, received by Wise County SO. So if you're looking at the budgets, if you're looking at the budgets of the three cities who are in dispatch discussions, again, it's discussions. This is just an opportunity to kind of roll this out so everybody understands what we're talking about. It looks like Boyd spends about 19.3% on their budget with their PD, Rome about 20%, Runaway Bay 29%. Growth. And this is our, our most major concern, growth. So as county continues to grow, county calls will increase, and so will city service calls. Cities should be prepared to help WCSO address that city-specific growth. Over the coming years, other growing cities will likely create their own police departments, and the county budget shouldn't be expected to solely absorb those new city dispatch services coming online. So we see that right now with Decatur and with Bridgeport. They're, they're, they've got a police department, so their police department has a dispatch center. Highway Patrol has a dispatch center. The Wise County Sheriff's Office has a dispatch center. And so these three entities that we're talking about here tonight, they don't have a dispatch center. They've been, they're dispatched through the Wise County Sheriff's Office for no cost, no cost at all. And again, we're asking for buy-ins so maybe we can lift the pay of those dispatchers and keep them on the job. Craig's office is just across the hallway from mine, and, and he's in charge of the dispatch center, call telecommunicators now. And it's not unusual for, for the dispatchers to be in his office and complaining about the activity, how difficult it is to keep up with all the things that come through that dispatch center. And so I often hear them crying in there because of the difficulties that they face. So the last part of this presentation, and, and I know that we're not getting much in the way of pushback on, on that like we are on the dispatch, but again, even though it's pushback, I think it's part of the conversation. We've got to talk about this situation. So call sharing for the jail services, it costs us $65 a day to house inmates. And what we're saying that, that if we bring in Class C misdemeanors alone and bring them to our jail, we would like to charge that $65 a day back to the cities because those are usually tickets, maybe public intoxication, and that comes back through municipal courts. So we would like to charge those, those back. And so when, when you talk about Class C misdemeanors, you see Boyd's just had nine, Bridgeport PD 28, Decatur PD 73, Rome PD only 13, Runaway Bay only three last year. And they probably don't stay but a day, maybe sometimes two, but if they come in not just with a Class C, but there's a Class B, then it's, it's not, it's, it's not an issue. We'll pay for that, all of that, and we won't try to charge that out. So those are the two, two factors that we're talking about here, uh, on the, looking for some help on the call sharing with jail services, the call sharing for 911 services. So we propose this plan, effective date 2024 fiscal year, October 1st, 2023. So now, you have a question? Well, that, that call volume is, is coming from the officers in Rome. They're calling the dispatch center, and when they call the dispatch center, when they're making a traffic stop, then that's a call for service. But again, like I said earlier, in that call for service, when they have stopped that person, they may have about five or six different exchanges with dispatch center, but there's only one cause, CFS. No, 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 that's, these are radio calls, CFS, calls for service. So yes, yes, the 911 calls, yes, sir. So are you talking about that, or you talking about the CFS? Well, it, it, well, well, see, and, and I don't have that broken down because the 911 calls, it 26,000 911 calls, 26,101 in Wise County, other than those that go to Bridgeport and Decatur, 26,101. That's throughout the county, that's not just here. Yeah. Well, and I don't think it is because that, 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 I was showing the county, the county calls. Yes, but, but, but she, you're, you're, you're kind of confusing the two. You've got 911 calls, and you've got call, calls for service. That pie chart is calls for service, not 911 calls. Go, can you go back to that pie chart? There it is. So right here, these are calls for service, 12,152 calls for service. Fifty-two percent of those come from Rome. Yeah. Well, and, and that, that is just within the city. That's within the city, yes. So, so here's the deal, if it's a call for service outside of the city limits, that call for service goes to the Wise County Sheriff's Office. And then they are backing us up, and so they will be listed on that same call for service, the Rome officers will. When, when the deputies are out there, up here in New Fairview, and they have something happen there, then when Rome shows up to back them up, that's not another call for service, that's a call for service for the sheriff's office. Well, not that I know of, that may happen, but if an officer is outside the city limits and if they make a call and it's the original call, it could be a call for service, but they initiated, we didn't initiate. You're welcome, thank you. Yes, sir. I don't think I understand your reasoning. Well, it goes back to either pay overtime, and most likely it's going to be overtime because we've got to fill all of those vacancies somehow, so we're bringing people in, paying them overtime to cover those things. It could, but we need it to pay overtime. Yes, sir. No, no, there's no charge for 911. Well, and I'm talking about how busy it is in dispatch. That's what that's all about. It's difficult, and that's why I mentioned that. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, can we make sure everybody's using a microphone so for online? Yeah, if you want to come up here, you can grab this one. Yeah, to Sam's point, Rome is pretty small. And you had some statistics up there, but do you have any per capita statistics?
Per capita statistics? Not that I know of, these are the only statistics I have. I don't know if they're per capita or not. Yes.
If the city chose to go with Decatur or Bridgeport as a dispatch and then our officers are involved in some emergency and another call comes in that's a dire emergency, would we still have backup of the county? Would they still come? Or would we be expected to get somebody from Decatur or Bridgeport?
No, no, the backup would come from us. And I know there's already been some discussions between Rome and other agencies and that's perfectly fine if that's what they don't want to do because it will take some of that, some of that pressure off of our dispatchers if they so decide to do that. But I expect it's going to be a little more expensive.
What I'm thinking is, you're saying you want to start on the fiscal year in October? Is it a proposal for that, correct? Well, if you don't, what are you looking at? Do you get where I'm going there? Because the balloon's got to bust sometime.
And so, you know, that's the proposed date. I mean, it's not as if we have to set that date. We can move it back. But eventually, we're going to have to have some help. We need help now, but as time goes on with the growth that we're seeing, it's going to be even worse. Any other questions?
So say this proposal goes into effect and we all pay our amounts. When would the increase for dispatcher pay start?
Right away.
And would it help if, you know, like you said, with this, you know, basically the notice that says call 911, but as I was talking to Mrs. DeGan the other day, rather than 911, could they not call City Hall?
That would be much better. And in fact, what some agencies are doing, and I don't know, Eric might be doing the same thing, having an officer, a duty officer, who can take those calls, and that would help a lot.
Yeah, I think we've got a full-time administrative assistant or police department. No, Rachel is not full-time? I didn't know that.
So I know what they're doing out at the College, Rutherford College. They've got a duty line for the officer there, so if y'all had a duty line where maybe an officer could receive those things, those things that have to do with city-specific ordinance calls.
That is, Sheriff, if they're getting a call directly in the car and something goes awry when they're on a call, how does dispatch know where they are to ensure they're sent?
Well, if they're receiving that in the car, on the phone, they could call it into dispatch so that they know.
So if they go on site to a solicitor's call, it's just hypothetically, and it escalates and they're out of the car and the only notice they've received is on a duty call. How, I mean, that seems like that's putting them in danger of not having, excuse me, the required backup or anybody frankly knowing where they are, especially if it's late at night.
Anytime that they have a call and they go to a house and they check out to go to that house, go in that house, go to the front door of that house, they would call into dispatch and say, I'm out at this residence, give the address, and whatever reason they're there on investigation, any number of things. And then we, the Wise County Sheriff's Office, would know, and that would give them the opportunity to ask and see if that officer's okay, if they don't hear back from the officer.
So how does that negate dispatch taking the call? It's just delaying the call, right? Because the officer's going to take it in the car, he's eventually going to call dispatch. If they've just called dispatch first and sent the officer, you've got the same outcome.
Well, it would lower the number of 911 calls that we have. Then that's not something we need coming through the 911 system. But the officer who checks out there is a much more simple thing than to call, receive the call, and then call the officer and then keep up with the officer. If the officer just calls, say, I'm out on a certain event, here at a certain address, and then that's all we have to do. So it takes the 911 call completely out of it.
But if, okay, so let's go back to the posting on Facebook. We did change that number to non-emergency. We did that almost immediately because we had a call from Tammy and Dispatch about that issue. Who answered the non-emergency number?
Same dispatchers. But it's not an emergency call because they have a different activity that they ramp it up when they take the 911 calls as opposed to the normal calls. So it's not an urgent call, so they might let it ring a little bit longer than the other one. Yes.
Name's Steve Knight. I do want to thank Sheriff Aiken for coming out here and starting this conversation because we do need a good dispatch throughout the county and we need to be able to use your dispatch. However, you brought up something when you were talking about double taxing and you were talking about towns like Rome that have a water department. We're not double taxing our citizens on that water department. We only pay our water bill. We don't pay city tax to support that. It is funded because it's a business. Our water department is a business, it has fees to cover it.
Yes, sir. But don't you pay a city tax?
We do pay a city tax, but that city tax does not go to support that water department.
Okay.
That water department is supported by use tax.
So that basically would be the same thing with us at the Sheriff's Office. This wouldn't be double dipping then if those folks are paying us for the dispatch services?
Well, I'm just still thinking in my head that we need to find you money in another way for the whole county, rather than just these three cities because they happen to use your dispatch.
Exactly.
And it wasn't a problem in the past, it's going to be a huge problem coming up.
It is. It is a huge problem right now for us. And we're trying to get ahead of these things because we need some help. And so when you look at Decatur PD and Bridgeport PD, they've been taking care of their business for many, many years. But we've been dispatching basically for free to the local agencies.
I understand that too, and I can see we're down the line with what's coming towards us, we're probably going to have a much larger police department in the next 10 years and maybe have our own dispatch. But for now, we're just a struggling city, broke like everybody else is. I'm just thinking that rather than just coming up and billing us for one dispatcher, there's got to be some more county money somewhere that comes to you.
Well, you know.
Because, you know, and our water department is strictly funded by a use tax, not by my property tax.
So you think then that the Sheriff's Office should provide dispatch services for no cost?
No, but I think the funding for that needs to come some other kind of a mechanism. And I'm not smart enough to figure that out. It looks like the easiest way is to just go build the people using it, yes.
So where does?
But we've been using it for a lot of years.
Well, exactly, and we appreciate that, but this is the conversation that we've had over the last three or four years because the growth is just getting quite explosive. And we need some help because our folks are handling a lot of calls, 911 calls, they're handling other calls, radio, doing all the things that dispatchers do when it comes to checking 28s, CCHs, 29s, all the things that they do, 27s. Those things can get really difficult and hectic, and sometimes you need to come look and see all the warrants that they handle in there as well.
Well, is there any other funding mechanism that could be looked at?
Well, it seems to me the most obvious funding mechanism is reaching out to the cities that are receiving this service and asking them to help us.
Yeah, but my feeling towards that is if you're going to ask us to pay for that, then we have the due diligence to go out and see what we can get or what we pay.
Well, exactly, and that's certainly fair. And I appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Well, first thing I want to say is thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
You gave us this opportunity. The second thing I wanted to say to you is that, having been the mother of a county deputy and have watched them have tight budgets and I helped them write up grants so that we could have more coverage where we live, back in reserve. So I do have great empathy for the county and for law enforcement on that level. But I'm also on the city council. And part of our responsibility here, and believe me, I hear these two words every meeting. It's called accountability and transparency. And so that we are charged with asking you some hard questions to help us understand. So this .5 cent thing, it's been going on since 1987.
Yes, ma'am.
That's 36 years, and the purpose of that was to help the county get out of debt. So the debt that they had 36 years ago, I suspect that that's been paid off.
Well, there's new debt every year, new debt every year.
So does every town in the county put in this extra .5?
Yes.
Every town?
Yes, ma'am.
Without exception?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I mean, if they have sales tax within their city, yes, ma'am, half cent.
So part of the growth, like what we're talking about here in Rome, the majority of the growth in Rome is in the ETJs. That money's not coming, that tax money's not coming to this.
Well, but there's not much sales tax out there, I don't think, in the ETJ. That's mostly new build, isn't it? Rather than retail, is there retail?
So the county is the one that's getting the revenue from the assessments on the property for the land.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's pretty significant. And so as you look at that income that we are not getting, and that's really part of your coverage, is all of that growth that's out there because they're not in the city limit, then you ought to be looking at some bigger money coming in your way as you have that new expansive area to cover. So I'm saying that I need to know where our .5 cents appears on the county budget. I need to know where it goes. And I need to know how much you've been at that.
Well, yeah. I don't, but we've got a slide here that talks about what we do and this capital budget for ambulances and for the vehicles that we drive, it goes to those. Can you find that slide?
I understand the overhead of your department really well. So, but my point here is that you are going through the county. In the Rome area, the county is getting the majority of that real estate or that property tax. It's not us that's getting it here in the city.
And the tax rate for the county is, I recall, is 25 cents. It's 30 cents all total, but 4.5 cents of that goes to road and bridge. And then the other stuff goes to the general fund, and the general fund then funds us, and we're 34% of the general fund.
I would just like to suggest, I don't want, you don't have to give me more information because we're not going to take any action tonight.
Well, no, I would like to have a discussion, you know, and that's what this is all about.
I would like for you to look at the county and remind them, and I'm sure we are going to be reminding them, that the majority of the growth is coming from these new places that are going to need more service, et cetera. That's going to the county. And so I think we ought to be looking to the county to be paying for a big chunk of that.
Well, and I'm looking back to the agencies and asking for responsibility because we do so much for those agencies. And that's why I'm here to talk about that because we expect that those agencies at this point in time, the way that the growth that we've seen at this point in time, the other agencies that are not being charged for dispatch services, they don't have their own dispatch center, that they should too, should be a responsible person, responsible agency to take care of that. Because there are only three agencies in this county that don't have dispatch centers.
Just need some more information on money.
Well, I'm the country police. I don't do a lot about looking at the money. I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you that we need help. And we're asking for that help and we want to have that conversation.
And you know what? We need help here too. And so that's why I'm asking the county to reassess their budget.
But you've got a police department.
I'm not sure what that, that's a very weird one here.
A police department, shouldn't they have the dispatch center? Shouldn't they be bought into that dispatch center?
Yeah, how is a city like Chico, how do you handle that?
Well, those are our deputies, they patrol.
So this half cent that the county taxes us on, we don't get anything for that?
That's sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
But still from the city, right?
Yeah, it doesn't even come to the city. When we receive our sales and use tax allocation from the comptroller's office, it goes straight to the county.
I think that's what I'm trying to figure out is why can't part of that go to pay?
It goes to the county.
But it goes to the comptroller's office in the county.
But it doesn't come to us, is what I'm saying. We only get a penny and a half on the sales and use tax, and so that other half cent, we never see that. And when I went back and attempted to calculate those numbers, since 2017, we've sent approximately $1.3 million to the county just in sales and use. That does not account for the ad valum overlay that every citizen, either in the city or the county, pays through that tax rate to the county. So, and then I will recall this article that came out that talked about the smash budgeted sales tax revenue for Wise County. That talks about how the county has already eclipsed its numbers for this year and took in more revenue last year. I do believe their budget talks about taking in more revenue than last year. And so that's my question for you, Sheriff, is I understand you're coming here looking for partnership. But we're already sending money to the county. And I would think to Mr. Knight's question that the first logical stop is to the county commissioners to ask for additional funding.
And I do, every year, ask for additional funding. And we will do that again, but I want to go beyond that. And I want to be like Grapevine, I can be like Grapevine, but I want to be closer to what Grapevine's doing so we can get dispatchers and hang on to them.
I understand completely, sir, I do, and I empathize with your situation. But I know coming into Rome for the last three months and the work I've looked at, the budget we have here, that every penny counts for this community. We don't own our own city hall, we're in a rented building. Our police department needs upgrades, our fire department needs upgrades, we need apparatus for the fire department. And this council and my recommendations to them have to be looking out for the citizens of Rome first and foremost. And so we have to do a deeper dive analysis on our budget as to where the money's coming in and where it's. And so we have to do a deeper dive analysis on our budget as to where the money's coming in and where it's going out. And I think this council is just asking for that same reciprocity at the county level so we can talk to our citizens and say, yes, they're using the money wisely that we are entrusting them with on behalf of the county. Because everything that's coming into Rowling B, that tax rate that's laid, we're not getting any revenue, but yet we're serving that area. So that's going to be something that we have to look at in our coming budget, and $70,000 is a significant layout.
I understand. And we're talking about $65,000, and again, I say that this is a conversation, a discussion. There's a possibility that we could work out some deals there, but we need to start somewhere. Because the growth is here now, the growth's going to continue, and we can't do it at the Wise County Sheriff's Office unless we get some buy-in from other entities. And when you look at all of these cities around the metroplex, with the exception of Ellis County, they're doing that, and they've been doing that for years.
And I don't argue with the buy-in. I think maybe we all need to go to the commissioner's court and ask for additional funding because that would be, that would be a logical place to start. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and I do appreciate that, but I do see some value in these agencies who have dispatch services, that they too pay their fair share of that.
We'll have to agree to disagree on that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And I appreciate that, I really do.
I'm all for paying our fair share, but I think if we're going to do that, then we need to not pay the half cent sales tax to the county.
Well, and now are y'all capped here, are you capped at 1.5%? So even if you took it away, it couldn't come here.
Well, no, that's.
Well, that's why I was asking, are you capped at 1.5?
We get the full 2 cents. We have a penny that comes into general fund, we have a half cent that goes to the county, we have a half cent that's in property tax deduction.
So you, you're capped at 2 cents?
We were fully allocated in our sales and use tax, yes.
All right, I got a couple of questions. You mentioned increasing pay to your dispatchers to keep them.
Yes.
But then you're talking about the cost of an additional setup. So are you looking, you said 124,000 between the three cities?
Yes.
But are you looking to fund an additional dispatcher, or are you looking to fund the raises for the current dispatchers, not the ones that are empty seats?
Well, no, we're looking to, looking at pay raises for all of our dispatchers that we have now and try to get dispatchers to stay and hire new dispatchers to fill those vacancies.
Because 65,000 per person, that's more than what I make. And my company doesn't give pay raises to the people that stay there just to get new people in.
It's benefits, insurance and all of that together. So their pay is probably somewhere around 45, 40, 45,000.
But that's a lot of people, but you don't, you don't ask for pay raises when you can't fill empty seats. So if you were able to fill those seven empty seats, would that not alleviate some of the stress on the current dispatchers?
Absolutely, it would. And I think having them paid well enough, so like I said earlier, we don't have to compete with buckies. You know, it helps us because, and y'all have been around dispatchers, and it's a difficult world there. Working shift work, day and night, 365 days a year, it's a difficult situation. Most of them are parents, and they want to be home with their children, they're working a night shift. So I think if we do increase that pay, we do have more likelihood that we can fill those seven spots.
Well, I know, looking at a lot of business models around the world, they don't just pay more to try and attract people, sometimes it's about the environment and the management styles, and if y'all looked at the turnover rates, and maybe it's not just about the money, it's about the environment.
The turnover rates are high in dispatch and in the jail, and those are difficult environments. And we teach leadership, and we recognize the importance of the environment. And so, sir, I would say that you're all based on that because we're treating our people the way they should be treated. And they know that I'm here having this discussion today, and they appreciate the fact that I'm doing it.
Do you have the numbers on what your budget was over the last two or three years?
Uh, the entire budget?
Your budget per year?
You're talking about dispatcher, the whole office?
I'm talking about Wise County Sheriff's Office.
It's about 14 million.
14 million?
Yes.
Just this year?
Yes.
Okay, and from what I have read, that's almost doubled since 2020? And road and bridge is taking a cut in their funding when yours is still growing?
Well, that was during the global downturn in gas and oil, that's coming back up for the roads and bridges.
I think that kind of goes hand in hand, you got to support all the county. Why shouldn't they take a pay cut when other people are getting more money?
They did lose some of their funding for roads and bridges, but that's coming back online.
Like everybody else has said, I guess you haven't been to ask the county commissioners, because I know if our police department says, hey, people, y'all need to pay us more money, citizens are going to come to council and be like, well, they didn't say nothing to us, so why didn't you come ask us for additional funding?
I have had that conversation with them, and the commissioners have been good to us, they truly have. But we're looking for a little extra and some responsibility from the other agencies who are receiving our dispatch services. So that's why we're here to talk to y'all about that.
Well, you know, you made a statement a minute ago, you're a small-town police officer and you don't know the money. I'm sorry, but that's not the way policing goes these days. We have a lot of accountability we need in our police departments and our law enforcement officers around the world with everything that's going on. So when I have somebody come and ask the city for more money, but they don't know where theirs is currently going, there's no way where I'm going to suggest we put money into it, let alone $65,000 that we don't even have, when we can't even provide adequate building spaces for our police department, our fire department, public works, city staff.
Sir, when I talk about being the country police.
That was your exact statement.
Exactly, and when I talk about that, you know, I'm kind of trying to just put that down home country guy that I am, I'm a sheriff, I'm a Wise County sheriff, and I know a lot more about the budget now than I did seven years ago. So you asked me the amount of our budget, I told you 14 million, I can tell you for dispatch is 1.278 million. So I do know, and I do see, and you saw those cities, and you saw those counties that are charging those cities all around the metroplex, and we're asking to do the same thing here because it's working for them. I know those sheriffs, and I've had that conversation. That's why we have talked about this for about three or four years, and we're trying to move forward with that so that we can get a little more help than than what we normally have for a dispatch center.
I just know it's not in our budget to be able to do that. I mean, we got a lot of things we got to fix around here first before we start doing that. And I mean, again, you're not even able to tell us how much of our money is already going to you, so.
Well, I put it up there, it's on the wall, how much money is going to us.
To you.
Yeah, anybody going to the county. I can tell you that. Yes, ma'am.
So if you would make an appointment with the county commissioners, and we knew when that would happen, would you be willing to let us know that date so we could come and support your request?
We have budget meetings usually along June, July, and I can tell you when that's going to happen, when it's set by the commissioners.
I do, I do think that that makes a powerful statement. If the communities that you're visiting with come and support your needs at the county level. And I think that's something that we can all do together for the common need. So I would like to ask you to please think about doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Having been to the commissioner's court, I don't think it's restricted, you can go at any time.
Yes.
It's on Mondays.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
I think we got one coming up this next Monday.
Yes, yeah. So it's not restricted, and anyone can go, you just walk in, and if you want to talk, you go.
Yeah, it's much like what you do here.
So I have one last question, I think, before we might be able to wrap this up. If these cities that you want to partner with to share the responsibility are unable to pay the fees, what happens?
Well, I've thought about that a lot. Of course, there are other options that there are here in the county. That they can reach out to Decatur PD, Bridgeport PD, or even outside the county. But I think what we're representing here is going to be much cheaper than what they experience anywhere else. But we want to move along, we want to have the discourse and the understanding and the conversation so that we know where y'all are and where we are and why we're asking for this buy-in.
I understand, I think what I'm trying to get at is on October 1, if we have not arrived at a number, are we going to be shut off from dispatch?
We haven't made that decision yet, that's why I want to have this conversation, that's why we started talking about it three or four years ago, so it wouldn't be something new. And then we started talking to each chief about January, about mid-January of this year, so that folks would know. So it gave us plenty of time to discuss those things and try to find paths going forward.
I appreciate that, thank you for the feedback. I will say, Council, that June or July will be awfully late in the year for us to make that decision budget-wise, as well as if we have to start to negotiate an interlocal agreement with one of these other agencies. That's going to be really fast-tracked, and I'm not sure that we can make that deadline of October 1. So we're going to have to probably have an answer on this sooner than that in order for me to start talking with those other cities.
So one more question, would there be an option if, you know, if you couldn't pay the whole amount, like incrementally increasing it every year up to that level?
Yes.
And another quick question, with, I can't speak for all the other counties that were listed on there, but for Denton, I can. Those agencies that are paying that county, the county also provides radios, CAT systems, ticket riders, they provide a lot of equipment to those officers, helping with their job. Is that going to be something that we can expect too?
We are talking, and we've talked to Chief Debus about southern software. Now, I don't know, y'all already have computers, don't you, Eric? So we were talking about that, not necessarily providing the radios.
Okay. But I mean, if they need other specific equipment, I guess, that would be on the table, I guess.
Well, it kind of depends on the budget, it's something we could look at, it's something we could negotiate.
Okay.
Again, this is just a conversation.
And I haven't looked it up yet, but just doing quick math, your dispatch only gets about 9% of your total budget. Is there a breakdown of that online, or can we get a copy of it?
Uh, I don't.
Yeah, well, just mainly their.
The sheriff's office?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I could get that for you, I could do it.
Okay, I just wanted to see a breakdown and see where everything's going.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
As it was originally explained to me, we got the dispatch service from the county, but in exchange, the county, if it was unable to dispatch one of your deputies to a call in the county, not the city, then Rome Police would respond to that, say it's in Newark, or it's in Aurora, or New Fairview. But I was told that it was kind of a barter system, a trade there. So in the question of, if you cut off the service in October, does that mean that you would no longer ask the Rome PD to respond to those calls?
You know, and to say that we would cut off service, I don't, I don't think that we would ever get to that point. We do want to have those discussions, we want to have serious discussions, but we're never going to abandon another officer, regardless.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Sheriff Aiken, thank you so much. We know you don't have anything else to do. Bless your heart, thank you. And I'll holler at you in the morning when I come up to dispatch.
Okay, and we'll, one, let's go to regular agenda, the shine recipient for the second quarter of fiscal year 2223.
Mayor, I would ask that we table this till April the 13th, the recipient is unable to be here this evening.
Pastor Benzett, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chief Craig. Thank you again, Sheriff Aiken, and we're going to table this till when?
April the 13th.
Okay, rescheduling May 11th meeting in order to attend chamber dinner with the mayors.
Thank you, ma'am, I was asked to put this on the agenda as this does conflict with one of our meetings in May, we were invited by the chamber for Mayor Mitchell to come and give a presentation on the state of things in Rome. And it does conflict day and time, and so if we move this, we could put this to the following Thursday on the 18th so that we could attend that chamber event. That is where all the mayors from around Wise County are going to come and present a little blurb about how your community's doing and the future, and looking forward to all kinds of things that are coming our direction. I know we've not been as involved in the chamber as I would like to see us, so if that's something that we could do, that would be very, very helpful.
May I ask, when do you intend to canvass votes?
As.
I thought it was 11 days, no, 3 to 11 days?
Shayna, check the dates, we can go back and look again, but she said the 18th would be the last day that we could canvass the votes.
Because I thought it was, I looked it up today, and I thought it was 11 days, which would put us on 17.
We can check, either way, we can certainly adjust that, May 18th, I'm just looking to see if council has any interest in a reschedule at all.
Okay.
Motion to approve, as long as it falls within the guidelines of the canvassing dates.
What are we changing it to then? I'll have to go and check your date to make sure which one, so I don't.
We'll go for the 18th, but depending upon the canvassing timeframe.
Okay, that's going to put us a long shot in between meetings, because you, one of those council meetings, we did move up the May to the 20th, I mean, the April to the 20th. So that's going to give us, what, three weeks between meetings, and I thought. Oh, well.
I think when the calendar falls, we may have that anyway, but we can certainly adjust the calendar as needed, we can certainly adjust the agenda as needed.
Sure. So Josh McCabe, I guess that's a motion for you for the 18th of May. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go down to personnel manual.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an item that I put on the agenda and sent you all some information out, Shayna, could you pull up that? So currently, our personnel manual, I believe, was last revised at least in a whole, a couple of years ago. And this is something that, after you all approved the benchmark cities at our last meeting, I used that information to pull together a look at paid time off for employees as it currently exists, and what it exists or looks like in our surrounding seven communities that we pull our data from. I also sent you some information as it relates to the current system, if you'll advance that one page for me. The current system that you see in front of you has our PTO bank broken down in 80 hours and 84 hours employees. And you will see that we only have three categories of certified service or years of service, and so it's really time, we have some employees who are well past that five years, that we could drag that into further increments and allow for some additional room for growth there. So when you look at the maximum accrual and the single bank, that number at 4.92 up in the corner that you see for an employee basically from zero to two years is under what our surrounding communities serve, so of the eight of us that we would look at, Rome is down on the list, we are the last one. So if you'll advance again, please. The proposal that you have before you is either for option A, to continue to use a single bank of time off, or option B, to separate those times into vacation and sick leave, both have additional pros and cons depending upon how you would like to look at this. I have adjusted the hours for 80 to 84 to take into account those other cities that have that type of a bank, really, the only one out of the seven is the city of Decatur, who's still using the single PTO bank, the other six use the separated banks. So option A is adjusted to meet or match what they have in Decatur, it also, if you'll see in the left-hand column, the years of credited service, we included from two to five, five to eight, and eight and above, which give some of our longer tenured employees a chance to earn additional time off if needed. And you'll see that the numbers that are in blue really apply to the police department because a lot of those folks work 12-hour shift. In your packet or in the information I sent to you was also all of. In your packet or in the information I sent to you was also all of the verbiage that went along with the consolidated bank. There were certain changes that I had proposed. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on them. I don't think it's necessary necessarily unless you want to go through each and every one of those. We certainly can, but it was pretty self-explanatory.
Thought you were going to separate the, the, um, uh, PTO with the sick time?
We're working that direction. This is one to.
This is just the total number of days off?
This is just.
Our total time off?
So this is just, and I apologize for the typo. That's not a vacation leave bank. This is one single PTO bank.
Okay. So, but that's, then there'll be an additional for sick, sick time?
No, that's a separate. So you have two options to choose from. Either option A, which is a single bank, or option B, which breaks it into two banks. And we haven't gotten quite that far yet.
Okay.
Sheena, if you'll move ahead a slide, please, that might make it a little easier. So this is option B. It has the same years of credited service broken out. And you will see that on the bottom, that would be the sick leave bank if we separated vacation and sick. That three point zero eight hours per pay period is extremely consistent, if not right on the money, with the majority of the surrounding cities that we would look at. And then the eighty, um, the zero to two and two to five on through matches the majority of those cities as well. So it brings us in line competitively with our benchmark or peer group cities. So this is separating eighty-hour employees into two categories of vacation and sick leave. I also provided in addition to this information, a series of expanded verbiage that would go in the personnel manual that would limit how that can be used. It also limits some of the exposure to the city. For instance, if you have a single PTO bank, when an employee leaves, they are eligible to take all of that PTO bank with them. When you have a vacation and a leave, a sick leave bank, there is a limit. Employees are generally not paid for sick leave when they leave employment. They only get paid for accrued and earned vacation. Does that make sense? If you'll advance one more, this is, would be the option B for the two different leave banks for the police department. It's fairly straightforward from this discussion. It's just what does council prefer?
So it looks like with this one, it, I noticed on the other sheet, it showed eight, eight point something. And so they're getting vacation hours per pay period, they're getting in vacation hours?
Which category are you talking about?
I'm looking at the very top one for eight plus years.
Eight plus, they would get ten point three eight per pay period of vacation and three point zero eight of sick. Is that what you're asking?
Okay. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. That's ten days per pay period or ten hours?
Ten hours, I'm sorry, ten hours.
Okay. But I thought on the other one that you had, that was, uh, I thought it was basically city employees. So everybody's going to get this, not just the police department.
No. The previous slide on option B is the one that are your eighty-hour employees, which is your city hall and.
Okay.
The rest of us. We don't work twelve-hour shifts on, on that side.
I know, but still, you know, we've got everybody's employees and I, I, I think it should be distributed equally. The, you know, the time, the way that it's crewed, it should, it should be equally, whether it's police, police employees or administrative employees or public works employees.
But the shifts are not the same in the pay period. It's not unusual, it's not unusual also for fire department have something like that when they work twenty-four hour shifts. Most of those personnel manuals have a very complex breakdown of the formulary. But our fire department doesn't work twenty-four hour shifts, so that's not a necessity at this time.
Well, I think like you mentioned, a lot of the other cities are already doing the two bank. And most businesses are, well, most businesses aren't going to pay you sick leave when, when you're done. So I, I think that's a valid option to go with, with the two bank.
Yeah, cause it not only incentivizes, I guess, new hires if we need them in the way, but it's going to take care of our current employees as well.
Right. So it, it helps maintain the, the staff that we have and encourages those that we do hire to stay here because they see what they're going to get for their time put in, so.
I mean, honestly, that's, the separate bank is what I've had since I've been where I'm at. And so I would way rather have it that way.
Same here. So do you need a, just direction to move forward with, uh, coming up with the whole thing or?
I was really looking for a, what do you call it, carbon of community motion? Just a motion to accept option B as it's written and the associated language that I sent to you all previously as it relates to just the wording changes so that it supports these two different types. Because currently your single bank says they get paid for everything and we won't have that. So I changed, I updated the wording based on what I saw in the other books, personnel handbooks.
Why so move?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Inspection services?
Yes, ma'am. This is an item that I have put on the agenda as it relates to our health inspection services. In the past, Rome has used or is currently using a single independent vendor to handle these. I would like to see if council has any interest in moving back to Bureau Veritas, which is a larger company that has a little bit more depth on the bench, also has some additional coverage in their insurance policies for the city as it relates to general liability and automobile coverage in case something happens while, um, they are out doing inspections. I do understand that in the past Bureau Veritas was higher than the independent individual and that is no longer the case. They have created an additional tier that matches what we're paying to the independent vendor. I put both contracts in there, but if you would, if you're interested in moving back to that, I would ask for a resolution or a motion, excuse me, that authorizes a city administrator to negotiate or enter into an agreement with Bureau Veritas for the same services at the same rate. Yes, ma'am?
Sure. I was wondering, um, so with these inspection companies, are they expected to conduct the health and safety inspections on a regular basis without being called?
Yes. They, they are allowed to set their schedule and they have certain time commitments in which they have to do that, but there's no set day of the week or, you know, third Monday of the month, something like that. But we can always call them for a one-time inspection if we notice something either in one of our gas stations where they serve food or in one of our restaurants. We also have that option to call for one in-between times.
Is it Veritas? Aren't they already doing some of the other things? This is just the health inspection, right?
This is just the health inspection.
To bring that under Veritas.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to know if there was a regular type of schedule so that.
I believe it's quarterly.
Quarterly.
I believe it is.
Okay, yes. All right. And then, um, when we call upon them and say, um, and, and I think this is probably a administrative responsibility, but when, when we say, we need you to go and conduct an inspection, is there a timeline or can they drag that out?
That's not a, I don't have an answer for that. I don't know that we've had that problem. I think staff who've been here longer could probably answer that. Um, I do have several reports and I know that Julie's really good about keeping up with all of those things. She's joined the liaison for that type of a inspection service. And she's developed a very good rapport with Bureau Veritas for other items. And then she's spoken to the individual who handles this independently for us as well.
Well, I, I've just, you know, I just, we had an experience, um, not in this town, but, uh, we ask, um, for them to come and do an inspection. It took them five weeks.
Oh, no.
To get there.
I have not experienced that in Rome, nor have I seen that in any of our paperwork, but that was an issue.
You know, that, that, that was a pressure point for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my last question about that. So when they, they go and do their inspection, and let's just say they make a mistake, is there some sort of accountability?
What type of a mistake are you talking about? I, I know they have a pre-form checklist that they go through according to the state of Texas and they look at three or four different categories of things with several subcategories in that.
So let's just say they mark the wrong cat.
That I, I don't know who would know that unless the business owner brought it up because city staff are not on hand for these inspections. They're independent and in the field.
But once that becomes apparent, then is there some accountability for the disruption or the additional cost that that person had to pony up? I would imagine each one is, whether it's Veritas or whether it's independent, I would imagine they have some sort of.
I know Bureau Veritas does. I don't know about the independent. The contracts are vastly different.
I just wanted to be sure that there was some way to protect us if they make.
I do think that the Bureau Veritas contract is more robust and has more protections in it, which is another reason why I've brought this forward for council to consider. We've. Carvin says they both have an indemnification clause. I did have a chance to get a lot more exposure with our health inspection team during the issue we had at the Dairy Queen. So that's, that's been something that I've been able to dive into recently.
I, I just wanted to be sure we were covered.
Yes.
With those.
We are covered.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I was going to bring in. I think with Bureau Veritas, it's far less likely, hopefully, that we're going to be running into the Dairy Queen issues. But that was all I was going to talk about.
Got a motion?
I make a motion for the city administrator to enter into negotiations with, uh, what's the name of the company?
Bureau Veritas.
Bureau Veritas.
Second?
I'll second.
Does she make?
Let's move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Got executive session, uh, number four, section five by one, point zero eight seven, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city has received from a business prospect that the, that seeks to locate, stand or expand, stay or expand in or near the city and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. Water system acquisition, acquisition via T C Q proposal. It is seven forty-one. Okay, you send charge of my stuff.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's seven fifty-five, we reconvene into regular session. Uh, there's no action out of the, um, executive session. Future agenda items from anyone? Okay. And motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're good. We're out of here. Thank you.